And I'm just going to kick off the meeting here. A couple of housekeeping items, uh, for those of you that your cell phones with, please, uh, sign this number right now. We do have some, uh, emergency personnel here that will need to keep theirs on. Just so you know, Chief Fuller from the fire department is on call tonight. So if he has to leave like that, that is the reason why. And with that, I will turn over to whoever wants to talk first.
Alright, uh, thanks everyone for coming tonight. Uh, my name's Dan Fuller on the fire chief, this is Dennis Argus, he's our police chief. And this is an open, uh, open forum town hall to discuss or answer any questions specifically to the public safety needs in our community. Uh, it's not, and we always start these conversations, we've had them all over the place with different community groups who have asked us out. And we're very quick to point out that we're not advocating for or against any of this, uh, the sales tax. And that's not our job and it's not our place. So, but we are here to answer questions and provide information so people can make their own decisions. And then specifically to talk about the, there's going to be two questions on the ballot and how that does work for us. Just so everyone knows that that's, that's what's happening. So, um, you know, for the, the fire department side, one of the things that we're looking at, we have some, some growth we need to do. We've done some fairly good growth in the last four or five years. Uh, but we are, we're catching up to where we need to be. And we're trying to position ourselves well in the future. Couple of the things that we look at as, uh, as the fire department is our response time and our staffing numbers. And it really is driven by geography and call volume. So the geography issue here is that we have a city that's somewhere in the fourteen square mile range. Uh, there are six planning zones throughout the city that go, you know, two up north. There's two north I ninety-four and then two that are stacked on each other down here, down south. So that's, uh, uh, just south I ninety-four to thirtieth avenue. So actually just around thirty-second, two avenues down this way and then everything in south. That goes all the way down, uh, almost in Horace or touching Horace. So, um, we know that there's two of those planning zones that's not going to need a fire station for the foreseeable future because they're really heavily industrial and not a lot of, uh, not a lot of residential. So there's not a lot of call volume. So, you know, there's people working there Monday through Friday, daytime hours. Maybe some late shift people working there at some of our, our, you know, we all know the names of some of those, those, uh, businesses in our community that produce goods up there. Uh, but the rest of the planning zones are going to need call, need fire stations eventually. And they're going to need a fire truck with three firefighters in them, in that fire truck to get to a call within that zone within, we use a five-minute response time for medical emergencies and a five-minute thirty-second response time for fire emergencies. And that's a nationally adopted standard from the National Fire Protection Association. Uh, that's based on a consensus standard, they get together, technical groups and committees that go through that every four years and update those numbers. And those numbers really haven't changed, that's where they're at with the recommended response times. We actually go a step further and make sure that we look at those response times in terms of how they affect fire loss and loss of preventable, preventable loss of life in our community. As people that have heart attacks, strokes, trauma, and they need someone there quickly, within the five minutes, to start basic life support measures, to start that chain, to get them to some sort of definitive care, which a lot of those case, uh, every one of those cases, cases are definitive care is a surgeon, someone, something at the hospital, something that either cath lab or the stroke, stroke center or a trauma surgeon, something like that to fix what's happened. And that's one of the goals to look at. And the other one is fire loss. We know if we get a fire truck within five minutes, thirty seconds to a call, we can keep fires small. We've been able to demonstrate that in the last three, four years with this full-time fire crew that we have on duty at the south fire station. We've had a number of calls where we've shown up and it, and it has to be the right mix of things here. So it has to be that they're not committed to another call and that they're available to respond. And the call, the fire needs to be identified at an early stage. We've had some great saves lately, uh, especially deck fires this summer. We've been able to stop deck fires, call right away, a truck's available, gets there. Five hundred, thousand dollars worth of damage compared to millions of dollars of damage if an entire apartment building catches on fire. Or, uh, a loss of life because of fire. We've only had one fire injury in the city so far this year. We had a fire injury last year, we had a fire death year before. These are numbers we don't like, you know, we want to keep those all at zero. So that's really our, our intent here. And then, uh, obviously our call volume, just to share numbers, we've gone from, from the three, four hundred calls a year to twenty-eight hundred calls a year. And we'll be looking at twenty-eight hundred this year. And we've taken steps to actually go forward and try to reduce the call volume proactively to stop repeat super users of our nine-one-one system through community risk reduction practices. So we're, we're trying to beef up to respond to calls at the same time, trying to make sure that we're just not completely swamped with call volume. So trying to be proactive. Uh, the staffing numbers here, we only have five firefighters on duty right now, today, right now. And then NFPA says we should have seventeen for a run-of-the-mill house fire. So that's a single story, any house that you see, for the most part, most of the houses you see in West Fargo, except for the really large ones, is seventeen people. And the first four people should be in five minutes, thirty seconds and the rest should be within the nine-minute mark. So we're trying to meet those standards and trying our best that we can to, to make sure that happens. But to go to seventeen people from five is going to take time and money and buildings. And that is one of the things we are addressing right now is in the fire station on the north side of town that's actually able to have full-time firefighters at it. Uh, if you live north I ninety-four, the day that fire station opens is going to drastically improve the response times for that entire area. And it's going to give us some system coverage where right now we have times where we might have two or three calls, usually about twenty, twenty-five times a month. We have more than two calls running at once. And when that happens, we have to call back off-duty firefighters or part-time firefighters at some of the stations. Now, if we go to a third call, then there's no one to go. And that happened two-hundred-and-thirty-nine times last year. And there was no one to go to a call in West Fargo. And a handful of those times, a fourth call actually came out and we had to scramble to figure out a way to cover it. We had to either cut people from one call, cut them short, call Fargo. Fargo's been a tremendous mutual aid partner for us and we've been very lucky to have their expertise and help through this growth phase. But we'll call them to come to a call if we need to. And it, it doesn't work well all the time, but it gets us by. So, and when these are some of the challenges that the fire department's facing. And one of the reasons why, you know, we've gone to the city commission and said, we need to see an increase in, in our staffing and staffing levels, it's money, fire trucks is money and, and, you know, fire stations is money. So, uh, we've kind of waited until we're at the point where we, we absolutely have to make this happen. We're going to end up having tragedy in our community and we don't want to see that happen. So, so that's where we're at now. Um, and those are some of the fire department needs, but I'll let Dennis talk about some of the police department needs.
Well, welcome everybody, uh, appreciate, uh, everybody coming out tonight. Um, hopefully, uh, Chief Fuller and I will be able to answer, uh, some questions if, uh, people have them. But I'll just give you a real brief rundown, uh, of some of the things that I think are, um, really important in terms of, uh, operations right now within the police department. Um, we're kind of in the same, uh, position as Chief Fuller with the fire department in terms of staffing. Um, our biggest needs, uh, that I go to the commission with in terms of budget is additional staffing and some equipment needs. Um, you know, we've got a lot of different challenges, uh, within our, uh, police department. Uh, one of those is, um, the, the increasing size of the West Fargo Public School District. Uh, we staff, uh, an SRO program there for all of the, uh, schools that are within, uh, West Fargo Public Schools. And, and right now I've got nine full-time people out of my authorized strength of seventy uh, that are assigned to, uh, a school resource officer program. That's eight officers and one sergeant that supervises or manages, uh, that unit. And so some of those schools, um, are within, you know, the city of West Fargo. West Fargo Public Schools extends down into Horace and it also extends up into Harwood. And so we have, uh, those challenges as our school district continues to grow. Um, we have an excellent working relationship, uh, with West Fargo Public Schools. And, and when they need extra people brought on, we collaborate with them. A lot of the funding, uh, for the SRO program, I'm sure people have questions about that. Uh, it's a, it's a mix of, uh, different funding mechanisms, um, with our SRO programs. Some of our school resource officers, particularly those that are assigned outside the jurisdictional or city limits of West Fargo, like Horace Middle School and Horace High School. The school district picks that officer, the expenses for that officer up at a hundred percent. Um, some of the other officers that are assigned, uh, within the city limits of West Fargo, uh, into our middle schools, uh, elementary schools and our high schools. Uh, some of those are funded at a hundred percent if they work, uh, year-round, uh, because sometimes there's summer school that officers, uh, take part in. But the majority of those officers are funded at about seventy, uh, seventy percent. And that is because seventy percent of the year, they're assigned to a school. The other thirty percent of the year, they're back in the police department when there's no school in session like in the summers. And they, uh, they fill in, they help out, uh, sometimes in our investigations division. Sometimes they're out doing community outreach work. Other times they're, uh, um, they're filling in staffing for our patrol division, things like that. So one of the challenges, you know, certainly with, uh, with a growing community, growing school district is being able to provide adequate safety for our schools. So, uh, but we, what we don't want to do is mislead anybody here tonight because there's been some information out there that talks about, um, you know, the school district and the fact that sixteen elementary schools that are in, within our, uh, West Fargo Public School District only have two officers covering those sixteen elementary schools, so they kind of float between those schools. Uh, there's no funding directly tied, uh, to increase the staffing. Uh, those are decisions that are made, uh, by the school district and then we work with our city commission, uh, and budgets. Uh, but indirectly, I, I do get concerned about the number and volume of incidents that, uh, are happening um, in our community, not just the school district, but, uh, things that are happening, happening within the community. And, uh, I just don't believe that right now we've got adequate staffing level. So, and I'll give you an example of that. Um, generally when we come out into these forums, I, I like to ask people in the audience, how many, uh, officers, uh, that people in West Fargo think are working during any given shift? Like during the day shift during the week? I've had answers range from fifteen to twenty. Um, you know, sometimes the numbers get a little bit crazy and high. But, uh, the truth is that our, our minimum level of staffing hasn't changed for the police department in the last ten years. So we have three officers working most days and a sergeant. So we have four police officers working from Harwood all the way down to Horace to respond to nine-one-one calls and emergencies. And so our, our call level in that last ten years has gone from roughly twenty thousand calls per service a year. We anticipate we're going to be somewhere around that thirty-two thousand mark. So we've had an increase of twelve thousand calls for service a year. And everybody knows that the, the types of calls are getting to be more significant, right? In, in our community, we have a mount health crisis going on in our community, we're not immune to that. We have a drug problem in our community, we're not immune to those. Fortunately for us, uh, I get to keep reporting that we are bucking the national trend in terms of violent crime in West Fargo, those numbers are trending downward. But some of our lower-level property crimes are still continuing to rise. And so we want to be able to be as responsive as we can to the, to the people in the community. And some of the lower-level, uh, things that, that I hear a lot about, uh, what I like to, uh, term the quality of life crimes and put into a bucket. A lot of different traffic complaints, um, some lower-level criminal mischief and thefts and things like that that, that impact people's quality of life in this community that I think the citizens of West Fargo have grown accustomed to having a, a police response to. Sometimes we're not able to, uh, respond to those calls in a, in a manner or in a timeframe that I think, uh, is appropriate. So staffing for us is certainly a concern, uh, along with Chief Fuller. Um, and then some equipment needs. I talked a little bit about, uh, if you follow the city commission meetings at all, uh, rolling out a body worn camera program. Uh, that's a top priority for me in January to get, uh, our officers wearing body worn cameras. I think it's important, uh, moving into twenty-twenty-three, uh, that we equip our officers with that. Uh, it's going to do nothing but, uh, you know, increase, uh, that trust and transparency that I think is so important in, in this time, uh, that we're living in, when, especially in, in this profession, in the policing profession. So that's a big ticket item. Uh, we also are in, uh, in dire need of a new command post right now. When we have significant incidents that happen in our community, we have a pull behind trailer, uh, that we try to operate out of. And we've had some high-profile things happen here in the city of West Fargo, um, particularly right after I started, uh, September of twenty-twenty. A couple of unfortunate shootings in our community, um, and those are, those are incidents where we need to be able to, um, get a mobile command post on scene to be able to work with all of our investigators, neighboring law enforcement agencies come out and help us. Fire department, uh, oftentimes is involved in those with us. And, uh, it's just not, uh, what we have right now is not adequate. We are running into all sorts of maintenance issues with it. So those are a couple of the, the bigger ticket things, I think, from a police department standpoint, so. Uh, Lieutenant Anderson, uh, is here. I don't know if you have anything else, uh, that you wanted to share, but, um, but we're open to questions. So he's got a microphone, so if anybody in the audience has a specific question about, uh, you know, the operations of the police or fire department and some of the needs that we have, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Um, my wife and I just moved to North Dakota in June. So we're not comfortable yet with understanding how funding arrangements go. So I feel like I'm talking to a couple of sacrificial lambs here because I don't think there's any doubt that there's a need in a growing community to, to expand fire and police protection. Right? To me, that's just obvious. My questions are from a mechanical standpoint, and that is, is this the way to fund this? Where I'm used to is a sales tax that's voted in by the citizens can also be voted back out. So does that mean in three years, we approve it? In three years, citizens say they don't want to keep it? What then happens to the funding, what happens to our operations? This seems like it's not a very reliable funding method. Second is on this that my wife read on the internet, which immediately makes me a skeptic. But sure that again, this isn't the way that sales tax funds are intended to be used. They're supposed to be used more for capital expenditures rather than operating expenditures. And I hope you can help me understand how that actually is set up with the state. So I, I'm concerned about, is this the right method, not whether there's a need or not? Thank you.
You know, I don't, uh, and I, you know, I certainly don't want to, uh, speak for Chief Fuller, but, um, when it comes to, uh, funding, budget requests, things that we put forth, uh, both, uh, Chief Fuller and myself to the commission, uh, the methods that the commission decides to use in terms of, of how they get funded, uh, wouldn't be a question that I would be able to answer or shouldn't, I shouldn't answer for our elected folks because those are, those are decisions that get made, um, from our elected folks. And so, um, I don't know if, uh, if anybody wants to, uh, to try to address that, Chief Fuller, but I, you know, I, I, I certainly understand the question. Uh, but, but when it comes to, uh, those decisions on how money gets appropriated and what gets approved, uh, I can tell you the budget process, uh, I, I put forth a budget that's based on the needs of the police department and I, I know Chief Fuller does as well. And that goes through a process and that gets looked at by our city administrator and then ultimately those decisions on what gets funded and what doesn't, uh, comes from a city commission level. So I don't know that I'm the appropriate person to answer to the, to the, uh, to whether it's inappropriate, um, you know, way to fund general operations.
See, therefore, that's why I felt like I'm talking to a couple of sacrificial lambs here because the questions need to go to people who I guess aren't here. And I wonder why that would be. There go my previous comment about it's a cowardly way of doing things. Because I question is like, if we could, in the initial budget, budget like twenty thousand dollars for Dale Carnegie training, I would have put a lot more emphasis on police and fire protection myself. But you know, I'm new here, uh, so I appreciate it, but I wish the other people were here.
And, uh, just to, to speak to your point just a little bit, um, and again, just like Chief Otters just said, we're not the decision makers when it comes to the funding. But, uh, and since you're new, I mean, thanks for coming here, number one, I, I, I hope you like it here. Have you made it through the winter?
We love the holes.
Yeah, okay. Um, you know, we've, just to highlight some of the growth in the fire department, since, since you haven't been here, we've, we've done a lot of growth in the fire department. Uh, so when I took over as chief in twenty-fifteen, we were a forty-person volunteer fire department that operated on six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year for the city. And, uh, and that went out to like thirty-three dollars per person per year throughout the entire city. And, and cities our size at that point in time, we're spending on average ninety to a hundred dollars per person, per year, per resident, per year. And that's not saying that we, that was, you know, what's right for them is right for them. But we came back and figured out what's right for West Fargo and what we can do. And we've been really working hard to try to keep our budget down and appropriate and still be cost-effective. And so those are some of the things that have happened in the past that got us here. But we're really, uh, given the, the growth in the last, you know, three years, four years and where we know we're heading, which, you know, it's, it's, we're working on, you know, our, our very talented planning and zoning director, Aaron, he's working right now on, uh, uh, overall study of how we're looking to grow the city and what area we're going to grow into and how that master plan is going to work. And I'm very excited about that because, uh, being the fire chief here now, I can actually put my thumbprint on, on this is where we need a fire station, we know how much money that's going to be and how much a truck, and we know future planning and we're done playing catch-up after this. I mean, I really, I really just want to make that point that we've, we're just getting to the point now where we're going to be where we need to be. And the growth is going to be nice and slow and there's not going to be a giant thing that we're going to have to handle in terms of revenue and trying to find money. But, yeah, just to recap, I think with, with Chief Otters, yeah, we're not the people to answer that. Your knowledge, thank you, sir, we appreciate your question.
Uh, first of all, I'd just like to thank you guys, I see there's officers and stuff in here because I don't think there's anyone here that doesn't think you deserve what's going on as far as salaries and things like that. The issue that I have with this, going back to this gentleman right here, is that the sales tax has no sunset on it. So it's going to go forever, so it becomes a slush fund as I see it. It's going to go on and on and on, okay? So I don't think that's a good thing first off, okay? And as he said, I think that if we're into a sales tax, it should be for capital improvements, for infrastructure, things like that. The new fire station, obviously we need it, I understand that. But when it goes the other part, and once again, as you guys said, the city commission isn't here, all those things, that needs to be a budget. And in that budget, it needs to say, okay, this is what we need to go to the police department or the fire department or right on down the line, your salaries are set, it just doesn't come out. The other part about that is with taxes as they go along, I'm in the very same situation, okay? I think it's a little misleading sometimes because we were told by the city, okay, hey, guess what? We're not going to raise the mill levy. We're not raising the mill levy, but guess what? This year my house went up by thirty-three thousand dollars. So do you think my taxes dropped or increased? So that's misleading to people. Because you say, hey, guess what, I'm going to, we're going to drop, we're not going to raise the mill levy. Couple of years ago, they dropped it by point eighteen. My taxes still went up in my house, but they said, hey, we dropped the mill levy. So that's a concern of mine, it's a major concern. And once again, I, I, I appreciate what you guys do, I, I understand that, okay? But we don't make the salaries that you guys have, that's what I mean, the commission. Now, those things I don't think should come out of the sales tax. We need to budget and we need to take care of the needs, not the wants. There's a lot of things, there's a lot of wasteful spending going out there. And I can tell you guys things, you're aware of it, Chief Otters. You know, they put up a hundred-and-forty-six thousand, a hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars to put up the no parking signs around the city that we don't enforce because they don't have enough people to enforce them. But they spent a hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars to put them up. That's a huge waste. You know, what, what are we doing with that? Okay, that's a hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars we could use for something else. We could go to salaries, we could go to the body cams where the case may be. There's a parking lot on Cheyenne Street we spent sixty thousand dollars on for no reason at all, okay? And I can go on and on about those things that happen, but that's where I think things here, it needs to be looked at that, you know, be real honest. This is, you know, a telling, needing informational, but, you know, you guys are here and you said, we're not telling you how to vote, I understand that. But in that other part about that, no one's out here saying, hey, we're, we're, we're holding this meeting to tell you, no, don't vote for it. Okay, so that's, that's a concern of mine.
Yeah, just, uh, real quick, uh, and I, I echo, uh, Chief Fuller's comments. You know, being a new resident to West Fargo, we're glad you're here and, uh, being engaged. And, uh, in terms of, uh, I've been, we've been out to a lot of different civic organizations and, uh, you know, talking to PTO groups and things like that. And really, uh, Chief Fuller's job and my job is, is, um, I don't, I don't see us as sacrificial lambs. I, I certainly understand why, why you might think that. Uh, but when it comes to, to talking to the public about the needs of the police department and why we're concerned about, uh, our staffing levels, uh, to provide adequate public safety or the needs in the fire department, we're absolutely the two people that should be standing up here, uh, providing facts to, uh, to the community. And so that's why we're here. Um, I, you know, I know, certainly, you know, I'm, I'm familiar with, with what you're bringing up, sir. And, uh, but, but again, those are, those are commission level, uh, issues. But, but when it comes to, you know, police department operations or fire department operations, um, there's a reason why they have Chief Fuller and I, uh, in these positions and, and we should be able to come out and explain, uh, what our needs are to, to the people that we're, um, that we're serving, so.
Good evening, I'm the mayor of West Fargo, my name is Rodney Dartis. And if you have any direct questions that you would like to address, I'd be welcome. Try and answer those questions with some of the things that I've been listening to. But, um, be happy to try and answer any of the questions that you might have with regarding, uh, the position and the, and the process that the city commission has decided that this is the right.
I, I think it's good that you're here, Mayor, because that's been, your, your knowledge is kind of what the last two people have kind of been wanting.
Okay.
So it's good that you're here. And I guess I just have two questions, and maybe I missed this, but how much are you talking for this sales tax? How much is it going to be?
The half sent, the half sent sales tax in the first year will raise about two-point-three million dollars. That's how many dollars? The half sent sales tax will raise.
Okay.
If we take a look at what the budget requests are that we have for twenty-twenty-three, just in fire and police, that's going to go up approximately six million dollars, is it not? So with regard to the, the public's perception of, um, there were, there was a term used that, um, made me uncomfortable. This is the purest form of city government that you can have. We're going to you to ask for that. What we, what we want you to understand is that it is your decision. We were, uh, troubled with, 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 uh, the expenses were coming at us. Go back ten years ago, okay? Eight years ago, excuse me, eight years ago, the city of West Fargo made a decision that we were going to go from a part-time fire department to a hybrid, or full-time fire department is what we're going to work for. So we went from an all-volunteer fire department. Amazing men and women that served our community for so long and so proud of it. But our community continued to grow. In twenty years, we doubled in size and we continue to grow at a very rapid rate. So that was an acre decision ago that we were going to go convert to a full-time fire department. Well, along with that comes equipment, facilities, staffing, training, all of those types of things, okay? So the commission has been working forward to do that, has been including it into the budget. Now, because of our continued growth that we have and the number of calls that we're experiencing, both for emergency services and with regard to, uh, to health and well-being of our citizens, as well as the number of fire calls that we're hitting, we have to go to a three shift type, or, or three full-time shifts. So when we're looking at the budgeting and, you know, to the gentleman before, I know him by his, by his first name, I consider him a friend, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go there, but he is absolutely right when we take a look at what we're, what we're spending. And there's a wants versus a needs. I can assure you that when we go through the budget process, that these gentlemen were held accountable, but they held themselves accountable along with their staff before they came in. But the need is still so much more. We're building a new fire hall, we have to hire fourteen new firefighters in order to staff that new facility with the equipment that we have. Because of the continued rise in the number of calls that we're having. My, my, in my oath of office, and you, and there's, there's more than one commissioner here. There's other commissioners that are here in the crowd as well. Our oath is to protect you folks. So we have to have that type of fire protection due to the rapid growth of our community. Chief, thirty-nine thousand, how, how many calls were here?
Twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight hundred, thirty-nine. Yeah, thirty-nine is what is, is the forecast for within two years, okay? So we have to staff that, fourteen firefighters and the equipment. So when we take a look at what the budget going forward is, what our sales tax is, everybody thinks that West Fargo collects so much money in sales tax. Money that's not allocated for our community improvement plan, our CIP plan as we refer to it. We only have about ten million dollars that we can move around, okay? That's all, only about ten million. I mean, uh, our sales tax collection's been running a little ahead, so I might, I might, it might be ten to twelve million this year. That's all we have, that's all we have as discretionary funds because we have commitments for employees and, and the staffing that we have. Now, with regard to the police department, the police department has been working under, uh, our police department is exceptional. Four years in a row, we're the safest city in North Dakota. But our police department, uh, and I was aware of this, you know, I've been, I've been your mayor for four and a half years now. We were aware of it, we were working under a ten-year-old staffing plan, okay? So in regard to the gentleman about, we don't have enough, uh, officers on the street for enforcement of parking. You're right, we don't. And the reason for that is that in our staffing plan for ten years ago, we, we had the number of officers that we had on patrol that were on traffic, uh, our detectives, our street crimes units and all of those types of things. So we were functioning under a staffing plan for a population based on ten years ago. We can no longer do that because of what society is dealing, all of us in our daily lives, we need to move forward. We need to hire more police officers. We need to, we know, we need to put a guard underneath them and we need to equip them and we need to train them. So this is, uh, I want to say that, uh, it, it's all coming together now because of the need for the fire department to go to our full-time fire department. And, and, and that has a, uh, a dramatic effect on the ratings of what your insurance is. I think we were, when we started, we were a D, Dan?
Uh, we were a four, the year before I got here, we went to a three, and we're about to go to a two.
We're about to go to a two, that saves money on your insurance plan. So again, uh, I, I, I want to answer questions, you didn't come here to listen to me and, and I apologize for going on, but I'm trying to address some of the things that I heard earlier. So this, this is about these two fine gentlemen and the job they do, and here's the other thing that I have to say about our chiefs and their command staffs, who some of them are here tonight. They, they're great at what they do, but they are data-driven, you know? Chief Fuller can pull out a map and he can show you, show you every hot zone that we have in the city of West Fargo. He can tell you what time of day you can expect a, a fire in a specific region of zone one, two, three, four, or five. Chief Otterness can tell you the time of day where a lot of these crimes have been convicted, when we're going to have a lot of accidents in the city of West Fargo. We're data-driven, so that my fellow commissioners and I, we rely on that information to, to make those decisions that we have to make.
Once again, my name is Steve, so you don't have to refer me as a gentleman, so that's as fine as that, but, and I, I've been at a city commission meeting.
One of the great Russian coaches for West Fargo, Haysville Packers.
I taught for eighteen years and I ran a business and then, and as far as that goes, it's either here or there now. You might have missed it, when I first spoke, I said, not questioning about these guys, they deserve every money they, the money they make. What I am questioning is the sales tax has no, the sales tax has no sunset date on it. So it becomes part of a slush fund. In a city this size, there should be enough, enough tax dollars, and I'm not going to get into that, that city commission deal. I've been there, you know that, that in that situation, we need a budget. And once again, we've got, got to stop the wasteful spending, that's the big issue we're going with. My question here is tonight, why, you know, it's almost like a scare tactic that we're not going to be safe anymore if we don't pass the sales tax, and that's not correct. That goes back to the same thing, we need to live within a budget. I don't know about you, but I live within a budget, I, I just can't continue to spend. And I'm, I'm guessing pretty much everybody here is in that same situation, okay? So if this was well thought out, they would have said, okay, we need this sales tax for five years so we can pay for the new fire station. Okay, then people are going to say, well, I understand that, it's the infrastructure, it's the capital improvements. But we're saying that now we want to use it for staffing. No, no, that's, that's a budget issue, we got to cut back somewhere else. I'm sorry, none of us here, you know, it's the same thing, you say, maybe you weren't here or there, when they said, okay, we did, we're not going to raise the mill levy. Didn't raise the mill levy, but my house went up thirty-three thousand dollars, okay? Right now, my projected taxes are going up about six hundred bucks. So my understanding, there's over ten thousand houses in the city of West Fargo that are paying taxes. You know, I'm not a great math guy, I taught social studies, but I'm pretty damn smart. But the thing about it is, is with, if you take six hundred dollars per home and ten thousand homes, gives you about six million bucks, I think, if I'm not mistaken. So that's what I'm saying, there's no sunset of this, and that's one reason, I, I, I'll tell you right now, I'm voting no on it, period, bottom line.
With all due respect, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you must not have listened to what I first said, because you responded as if I'm anti-police and fire. And that's exactly the opposite of what I said, so I'm offended by that. But we're here for a little conflict, that's okay, constructive conflict is always good. So, so you say you're data-driven, or we're data-driven. It's taken us ten years to figure out the data says we're going to be growing? We just now realized we have to add staff? Now, you haven't been mayor for those ten years, if we were data-driven, we would have already been adding staff.
We have.
Well, you didn't make it sound that way.
With all due respect, yes, sir, we have now.
Okay, well then, I've only been here for four months, so thanks for clarifying that, because it didn't sound like that with your answer.
Welcome.
I still come back to is the mechanical end of it. Is we're paying for operating expenses with what I believe is funds that are normally used for capital expenditures, which tells me that we're having difficulty. Now, it's a growing community, which means housing values are also going up, ergo, the mill rate doesn't go up, but the tax bill does. Well, if all that's taken into account, then there should be more money coming into than what, maybe what people have planned or thought about. But I still come back to is like, the community we just left is where you were eight, ten years ago. And I can, and no, people are already planning for those things. I'm just wondering why some of the stuff wasn't already planned for. That's it, and plus what I asked in the beginning, what I really asked in the beginning is that, is this actually allowed to be spent this way? I don't know.
When the, my fellow commissioners and I, when this was, when this proposal came forward, one of the discussions that we talked about, that it would absolutely, absolutely be only spent on police and fire. It's not going into a slush fund. It's not. If there's, if there's extra revenue collected, again, the first year is only two point three million dollars. And, and I apologize if that's offensive when I say only, but, you know, we're working with some pretty big numbers here. And so, and, and so if I could kind of, Steve, you used your name, so I'm going to say, Steve, here's, here's kind of what, uh, I think that, uh, an analogy, and your analogy is great. When you talk about your house, you talk about your special assessment and your, your house value is going up. So if, if, let's take my household for example. If tomorrow, my two kids, and they're each had two kids, so if those six kids are going to move into my house, are my expenses going to go up? My house isn't going to change, you know, I'm going to still pay the same special estate taxes. All my house, my, you know, my electricity bill will go up, my water bill will go up, and my, uh, my food bill will go up. And that's kind of the analogy that I'd like to use here, is that the growth has been so rapid. And because of that growth, and again, uh, city fathers before, uh, our city commission, they, they set this ball in motion, you know, twenty-one years ago, we crossed the interstate. So that development started down there. That infrastructure now is twenty-one years old as of this year. It's coming, it'd be twenty-one years old, there's infrastructure needs. All of these developments, when we're putting in the streets, and, you know, we have this, this wonderfully growing community, you know, drive down South Cheyenne, south of the interstate. Uh, I remember the criticism that the city commission prior to us received when they were going to put six lanes from the interstate to Thirty-second Avenue. If you drive that every morning, uh, that was a very smart decision. Our continued growth to the south side is just, has been amazing. And again, the, the revenues, uh, for, for the needs that we have for infrastructure, we've got a lot of work that we need to do on the north side of, on the interstate, or, north of the interstate, in some old town West Fargo. We're desperately in need of doing some water rehabilitation, sewer rehabilitation, street rehabilitation. And with all the growth that we've had and the resources that we've had to put into that growth, has put us in a position we're at today. And, you know, with, with respect, uh, uh, I would venture to say that the commission ten, twenty years ago, and I knew all those men and women that were on the commission, they never dreamt that we'd be at the position that we're at today with the type of growth that we would experience. And so, uh, there were decisions made that, uh, for this continued growth, uh, and it's been hard to keep up with. It's just a fact.
What about the commissioners five years ago?
Excuse me?
What about the commissioners five years ago?
Well, you know, we, when we, we ran for these jobs, we own it now. And we're dealing with it now in the best way we can. And again, the point that I really want to make is, you know, first of all, thank you for coming out this evening. Thank you for sharing your thoughts. But we are using the most democratic process that we can. We're not making this decision, you are. And that's what I think is the important part of this, this evening. So your input is very valuable, you know? Uh, it, it, that's what, that's what America's built on. But the decision is yours, it isn't our decision. Our decision was to ask you for your thoughts. And if you vote one way or you vote the other way, that's your decision, and we'll live with that.
Uh, Chiefs, thank you for coming tonight to present your stories to the citizens of West Fargo. Uh, Mayor Dartis, thanks for coming here, speaking, I wish the commission would sit up and talk a little bit also. My question is, if the city's tax does not pass next week or two weeks from now, what's the city's proposal then, what are you going to do, how are you going to make this money? What are you, how are you going to pay for more police, more fire, or stuff like that, what's the city's plan? I mean, like the gentleman here, Steve said, you know, his mill levy hasn't changed, but his taxes went up substantially in his house, and so has mine.
That's a great question, and, and that's a tough question. Again, I have two fellow commissioners here, I know that are in the crowd, and I don't know if there's any more, there's five of us still. It's a great question, what are we going to do? Well, you heard me talk earlier about the CIP, Community Improvement Plan. That's a long-range plan of how we're going to, how we're going to deal with upgrading facilities, how we're going to, uh, do street rehabilitation, water rehabilitation and all of that. And if you've ever been to a city commission meeting and you ever listened to any of us, we talk about the CIP as being a living document. In the sense that it's amendable because of exactly the questions that you folks have been asking this evening. So the first thing that will, will, would happen is say, for example, regardless of what the result of this one way or the other, if it's one way, what we'll have to do is we'll have to bring that document back in. And we are in the process right now, engineering, planning and zoning, uh, our city administrator and assistant city administrator are upgrading that as we speak, of what we got done this year, what it costs, what the inflation factors have been, all of that thing that we're dealing with. And, uh, you know, I guess maybe part of my, uh, answers to you should have been, we never would have anticipated what we're dealing with, the workforce shortage, the supply chain issues, and all those types of things and the rising inflation. All of our, uh, our projects' bids are coming in much higher, so. So those dollars are getting eaten up faster for these projects that we had planned for this year. So what we'll have to do is we'll have to go back and we'll have to take a good look at the CIP, we'll have to address that differently. But I'm here to tell you this evening that my commitment to the public safety is paramount. So we're going to find a way, and we're going to make sure that the citizens of West Fargo has the emergency services and the fire protection that they have, that, that, that they need, that we deserve. And the same is going to go for the police department. And there's going to have to be other things that we're going to have to change in the process, whether it's in our CIP or what we had planned to do this or planned to do that. We will make the revenue available, that public safety will still be the number one concern that I would hope my fellow commissioners share with me on what we're going to do for you folks, that's it. So your, you know, the question, the answer, we'll go back and, and the drawing board, and it's, uh, it's going to be interesting. And of course, let's, I'm being less than odd with you, if I don't say that there's a possibility that we have to raise some additional dollars. But first, we'll go the other way. Rather than just automatically expect that the city of West Fargo, uh, residents are going to give us some more money.
I would just like to add one last thing on that, in the bottom of where things are at, and I've been to the city commission meeting about this as well. And maybe we did grow too fast and, boy, everybody was happy because West Fargo's a city on the grow. And we expanded probably faster than we should have, and people didn't pay attention. But I've been to the city commission meeting and I've suggested this before, is that, you know what? If everyone wants to live here, then maybe we should get rid of the tax abatement. Because that's going to raise some more money right there, and I've been to the city commission meeting and you know that because I've been there and said, maybe it's time we take that away, and I've heard, well then, you know, Fargo's given it, Morehead's given it. Well then, let Fargo and Morehead deal with the things, let's go, take away the tax abatement, that's going to raise some money, and that'll be huge.
I hope I can sit down after this, and, and with all due respect, Steve, your questions are great. You're right, the city of Morehead, uh, has a tax abatement on new builds, up, up to a hundred, uh, West Fargo's a, a two-year tax exemption on a new build up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the cost of the house. Dearworth has a five-year tax abatement, if you build and deal with, you know, they're, they're very aggressive trying to get. Morehead has a two, has a two-year tax exemption. Fargo has a two-year tax exemption, so there's a little bit of, 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 competition's not the right word, I, I, I'm not coming up with the right word. But there, you know, we're, we're consistent with, within the region. And you, you probably don't think that that's a good excuse or a good reason, but that is one of the reasons that it is because, uh, we want to be good neighbors to our other communities, but, you know, we'll run West Fargo as we need to run West Fargo. And there has been discussions, I have, I have sat down with three of the, uh, regional major, mayors, uh, Fargo and Morehead, and we have had a discussion about this very thing, but it hasn't come to fruition yet. So I, I respect your question.
I'm sure there's other people that have questions, but one of the things that I didn't share with everybody that I think, uh, members of the community need to be aware of. that I think, uh, our members of the community need to be aware of, in terms of, uh, the use of our services, both police and fire, one of the, uh, statistics that I presented to the commission, uh, and I've been talking about publicly, is, um, who's utilizing police services? And so, Dan, uh, and the fire department are very good about being able to track times, response times, for, uh, their calls for service, and that's because everything that they go on is an emergency, right? The, the, the fire department responds to medicals, fires, and so, probably in the high nineties percent of the things that they respond to, is an emergency. That's not the same with the police department. Sometimes it's emergency response, sometimes it isn't. Sometimes it's a, a call that may sit in the queue, waiting for an officer to respond for quite some time, based on our call volume. But I think the interesting thing that I think all of you need to be aware of, in terms of who's utilizing police services, and sometimes crossover fire services, is when we, when we ran the data, we just got a criminal intelligence analyst, uh, last year, that was a, uh, position that was funded by the commission, to be able to, uh, extract some of this data, almost seventy percent, just short of seventy percent of the people that we arrest in this community, and these are things that people understand that the police department has to do, is go out and make custodial arrests, and hook people into the Cass County Jail for crimes that they're committing in the community, almost seventy percent of them live outside of the five-eight-zero-seven-eight zip code. They're not West Fargo residents. Coming into our community for whatever it may be, uh, there's a lot of great reasons to come into our community. We have great dining and entertainment, and with the lights complex, and all the entertainment, and shopping, and things that we have going on. Almost seventy percent of the people that, uh, that we respond to calls and take, that have to take to jail for crimes, are not West Fargo residents. The crash data, people that get into traffic accidents, a crash in our community, talk about a crossover, right? Sometimes they're injury accidents, sometimes they aren't. Um, that, that data almost mirrors identical, the arrest data. It's almost seventy percent of the people that are, uh, crashing in this city are utilizing, you know, our, our police services and fire services on, on, uh, on traffic crashes, are people that live outside the five-eight-zero-seven-eight zip code. So there, there are a lot of resources that are expended in the city, uh, between the police and fire department, for people that are visiting our community, or people that aren't residents here. So, those are, those are a couple of the numbers that we polled internally in the police department, because I think they're the easiest for people to understand. There's certainly, like I talked about earlier, medical emergencies, the opioid crisis, the number of, uh, those are cross responses, right, from the police and fire department. Significant medical calls, as our, you know, as our population increases, heart attacks, strokes, things like that, that require an immediate response, those are police response, and fire, and ambulance responses for, for lifesaving measures. So, there's a lot of those things going on as well, but, uh, but things that I think the general public understands the most are, you know, they, they understand that sometimes we end up having to arrest people, and they understand that a lot of times we have to respond to traffic crashes. And so I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of those statistics, but I don't think I shared those earlier. Any other questions from anybody?
So I'm a little confused at why there's two measures on the ballot. The Home Rule Charter, in my understanding, was designed for infrastructure only. Not, uh, equipment and staffing needs. So why is that, uh, on the ballot now?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Shockley, our city attorney, would like to field that question.
Uh, great question, and once again, like everybody said, thank you for coming out. Uh, the Home Rule Charter requires, uh, that you amend the charter to allow for a sales tax. And then, we also have to pursue into the charter, submit that sales tax issue to the voters, so it requires two votes. First is to amend the charter, and the second is to approve the sales tax. Um, the sales tax ordinance was published twice, it's available at City Hall, there's been some questions on, well, what can you or can't you use the sales tax funds for from the half cent? It's set forth in ordinance that would be voted upon. It could only be used for police and fire, equipment, uh, infrastructure, like buildings, and salaries. And so, very limited in what the sales tax could be used for. Um, there is no specific rule of what you can and can't use sales tax for, that's why it's put in the ordinance. And the ordinance limits what it can be used for. So, um, I work with a lot of different communities around the state, and you see sales tax being used for variety, it could be used for infrastructure, it could be used for economic development. I have one, uh, bond client that uses sales tax for both our capital improvement project, they have a full cent, they use half of it for the capital improvement, and the other half to operate a park district. And so, it's, it's really up to the voters, it's, as the mayor indicated, it's a very democratic process. Uh, that's why we put in the ordinance, and it's up to the voters to decide if we want to. Hopefully that answers your question.
And that's set forth by a North Dakota sentry code, and it has to be two-part, because, uh, we didn't wanna confuse the public, and if there was a possibility that it could be combined, uh, we wanted to follow that legal process and see if it could be. It cannot be, and so it's, uh, it's set forth by the North Dakota sentry code. So, any Home Rule Charter that would wanna add a half-cent sales tax, a mayor would have to do something.
Is there any reason it wasn't sunsetted?
That ultimately is a policy decision, however, it is being used to supplement, uh, the police and fire budget. Uh, so, if you sunset it, it would, in theory, create potential problems associated with it. You'd start funding positions, and if it's sunset in five years, what are you gonna do in five years? Because you're still gonna have those police and fire department needs. So ultimately, that's a policy decision. Uh, as everybody's been saying, it's ultimately your decision as voters, whether or not you want to approve, uh, the ordinance. I would just say, it is a, it's a very civil process, it's true democracy. If you wanna approve it, you can, if you don't, that's up to you.
One thing to add there, the, the great citizens of the city of West Fargo have done this once before. We have a half-cent sales tax for economic development. So the, the community has voted on this once before, very generously. And, one of the things that I'm proud of my fellow commissioners on, anytime that we're going to spend any of the money from the economic development, half-cent sales tax, it can never be on the consent agenda. The public gets to view, urge you every time that there's an action, if we're going to spend that money. And, and that's relatively new over the last five years, is that when those, if those dollars are gonna be spent, the public needs to know what we're spending them for. So there's, just, just so you know that, we have a half-cent sales tax that has been approved for economic development. And every dime of that has to run through the regular agenda, uh, for the last five years of how we're going to do that. So you're made well aware of how we're spending those tax dollars.
With, with that in mind, with the economic development, as the police chief said, and the fire chief said, we have all these out-of-town people, well, if it's economic development, they came here because we got the economy going. Should that economic development money be going to them, rather than going more taxes?
I'm looking at the city attorney, I don't know if we can do it that way, because the language, when we presented it to the public, was for economic development. And, uh, I think that would be a loose interpretation, if you will, of how to implement that.
Yeah, so, great question, uh, the sales tax ordinance that was previously approved by the voters has a split between infrastructure, that goes to the capital improvements plan, and economic development. The city commission, even if they wanted to on the economic development portion, which is only one quarter of the existing sales tax, they can only use that for economic development, that's by ordinance. And so when we talk about why we put an ordinance in front of people, it's what, it specifies what those sales tax receipts could be used for. In this case, they can, if the sales tax ordinance is approved, it can only be used for police and fire, for their equipment, uh, for a fire station, or a new police station, police cars, turn-on gear for the, uh, fire department, uh, or salaries for the staff. That's the only thing that it can be used for. So even in ten years, if you had a totally different commission that said, oh, we'd really wanna use that police and fire sales tax, or, to buy votes for the library, they could not do that. It's restricted to what it can be used for, just like the economic development sales tax. They're restricted to economic.
Can you bring it back to the people?
Yeah, you can try.
Any other?
You know, y'all have a tough job. I mean, you have a really tough job. You know, I'm the city commissioner and everything else, I, I accept that. You know, I've been an executive at a small company, you gotta try and figure out how to pay the budget, you know, pay your people, and bring them on, and you get, it's a tough job, I understand that. So I'm just trying to clarify here. So really what we're doing here, is we're voting on a permanent stream of income that will ensure that at least there's a certain stream that's only for police and fire. And it's gonna be permanent, let's just face it. And so, that's what it comes down to. So instead of trying to find a way to raise taxes, instead of cutting other expenses that perhaps are more important, this is the one way we can ensure a particular stream for that, just like the other streams for economic development. Correct?
Yes, sir.
So, let's say this sales tax passes. My question then is, is how are we gonna ensure transparency for we, the citizens, so that we know exactly what that money is being spent on each year?
So, uh, great question, uh, the city budget is a public document. So, that's the first thing, anytime you wanna make a, go down to City Hall, or a call, and you wanna copy the city budget, or the police department budget, or the fire department budget, that's all public record, you can get a copy of that. That's, that's the first level of transparency. Um, under the North Dakota Open Records Law, that is an absolute public document. Um, the budgets are line item budgets, and so, you can see very detailed analysis from how much a fire engine costs, to how much a police cruiser costs, which is amazing to me, how much a police cruiser costs, to, uh, different types of, uh, equipment, and salaries. Uh, the second for transparency is the ordinance. The ordinance sets forth what the funds could be used for expressly. Uh, and the third is, uh, all city commission meetings are open to the public. And so, uh, I can't speak for the commission, I only work for the commission, but if you show up and you ask questions, um, I'm sure they'll a- answer them, or find somebody that can answer them for you.
We have a report on economic development, that continues to monitor if, if we give it a incentive for a commercial build, or something like that, a TIF program, or a pilot program. Those dollars are actually taken from that economic development. And there's a, there's a running report, we know exactly where we're at, at any given point in time, once, you know, that goes through the process. It would be no different, in, in as far as a line item, with our revenue collections. We know what we're collecting with regard to that, a half, and then the split of the, of the half to a quarter and a quarter. We know exactly where that's at at any given time. This would be monitored in the same manner. And as Mr. Shockley said, uh, state law prevents, prevents us, and, uh, uh, you know, commissions in the future, or whatever, they won't have any latitude how this works. It, it's set forth by ordinance, and it's set forth by the North Dakota sentry code as to how it can be spent, and what we are allowed to do. There's, there's a checks and balances coming from the state in North Dakota, there's checks and balances, because we, we as elected officials can't be in violation of the city ordinance. But we can be removed, and we should be, if we're, if we're not doing the job.
I'd, I'd like to ask one question, though. So, that was an explanation of how the whole system works. As a resident, how would you wanna know it?
Well, when, when I go to the--
Sorry, basically. Yeah, he counts his steps if he can't tell.
I want something that's gonna be very easy for me, as a citizen, to pull up on the city of West Fargo website, find it, read it, and be able to understand it. Um, I guess as an example, sometimes I get a little frustrated with the website. I recently have, um, got a new dog, and I knew he needed to be, or she, um, needed to be licensed in the city of West Fargo. Well, to try and find that application to begin with, was a little bit of a challenge, because some other stuff came up, and I'm like, okay, there's gotta be a better way. But anyways, that's, so when I go to the website and wanna see, or, read something, I want it to be, you know, easily readable. I work in healthcare, so we have to have things at like a fourth grade level. And so, you know, if it's just something that's easier for people to read--
Of getting through the process to get your license?
Oh, no, we got it.
Okay.
Yep, yep, it was, once I found it, online, quick, easy, my credit card boom, we're done.
Well, something on the website that says what we, what we took in for the year, and how it was actually applied to our budget.
You know, and I've lived in West Fargo since nineteen ninety-three, um, but working full-time, being a parent, now I'm an empty nester, and I think now I'm getting more, um, involved in, in what's actually going on in the community, because I have more time on my hands. But, um, you know, this is a good forum, I do appreciate, um, the mayor coming, 'cause when I first was coming to this meeting, I was expecting there to be a more public, um, officials, I guess, more city commission, I mean, those that, um, maybe city of West Fargo wouldn't, um, can't even think of the term, administrator here, to kind of explain more about this, um, sales tax, and what's all going on. I mean, I guess I've been reading some different things on some social media, and Nextdoor, and trying to really, I wanna be an informed voter, I guess is the most important thing. So, here in both sides, I appreciate, um, hearing what our needs are. Um, my neighborhood was one that was involved, we had a, I'm gonna call them a bad family, and caused a lot of chaos in our neighborhood, made several nine-one-one calls to, um, the police for help, um, when we needed it, and, you know, so I really appreciate what we have in our community, and, and I do know that we have needs. So, thank you for being there, thank you for being in our neighborhood.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for your involvement with questions, and, and I'll make sure that we pass that along to our staff, on how we can get that as, as plain as we can, out to the citizens about where that, where those revenues are.
I'm sorry, guys, I know you have families who wanna get home, but I have one more question, and it goes back to the economic development. And in the community, I know that with the lights project, there's been concerts and things down, this is probably for Chief Arness here, but, and I know they hire their own police force, when, on those things, right? The, like, the, Evan and, what am I trying to say, like, they have their own, have to hire their own police, or, and security people, correct?
Yeah, that's, uh, so one of the changes that I've, I've worked with Mr. Shockley on in, uh, in our department is, um, if you understand my background, coming from Louisville, Minnesota, and having them all of America, uh, as one of our primary places, we had to protect, uh, post-nine eleven even more. Um, one of the things, the changes that I implemented right away when I got here, was rather than being able to staff those events with private security, um, I wanted police officers there to be able to--
I wanted police officers there to be able to respond in the event that there was some sort of incident there, right? That we would have trained police officers. And so, what we do now is, it's a voluntary basis for our officers to sign up for overtime. But those fees get passed on to the promoter or whoever's having the event there. So that doesn't cost the city of West Fargo anything to have those officers there. Those, those costs are calculated out and passed along to the, to the promoter. And, and the, and we get reimbursed for the police services that we have out there. And it, the, the number of staffing is based on the anticipated crowd and things like that. So you'll, you'll see off-duty police officers working at a lot of different events. Sometimes they're paid for by the school district. If it's a high school basketball game or football game, sometimes it's paid for by promoters or concert. You know, whoever's having a concert or West Fargo events, things like that. But those costs are not directly taken from the tax, from tax general, from tax dollars. Those are passed along to whoever's putting on those events.
Okay, so, I understand that part, that they're paid there. However, if somebody gets in trouble there and gets booked and has to be taken out of there, that now becomes part of the West Fargo Police Department budget?
Well, they would, yes, they would get transported by, by one of our street officers. You're correct, yep.
So then that's gonna cost the West Fargo?
I'm sorry, I, I.
That's not costing West Fargo?
Yes.
So I just wonder.
We have rented this facility for this evening and I'm getting a high sign that our rental's probably about up. So, if there's any other questions, that's, if we could, we'll do them very quickly. Again, we want to thank you all for coming out. The decision is up to you. Thank you again for being at this this evening. I want to, if I could, one more thing. Commissioner Brad Olson is here in the crowd. To the lady's point that she wished more of the commission was here. And Commissioner Robin Anderson is over there too. So we have, we have three of our commissioners here this evening. Listening to your concerns. Thank you.